Call me in the order at four thirty one. Let the roll show all our present with our mayor Walker attending via Zoom. Stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, it looks like we're done with three already. Building inspection program transition. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the council. As you all know, we will be soon transitioning building official inspection services to Minspect. Some things have came up in the meantime that needed to be sorted out between the two different, the one leaving and the one coming. The city had found out some different things through meeting with the state, building officials and what Minnesota rule allows us to do and doesn't allow us to do and things like that. So, one of the things that came up was obviously our current building official has a lot of outstanding permits that have been issued that they've been working on. When a new building official is hired on that exact day, they start taking over all permits and the old building official essentially is done and has nothing to do with them going forward. So, one of the things that we would like to propose, since Metro West has been with us for thirty plus years, has been great to deal with, we want to part on good ways, is to compensate them for the time that they did for plan reviews on issued permits. When Minspect takes over, they will continue on and do all the building inspection part of it, but they won't have to do the plan review because the permits already been issued. So, technically Metro West has already put the time in, did the review. And there's about thirty-five permits, thirty to thirty-five permits of that will be. It'll fluctuate depending on when and how long Metro West is with us. If they close some more permits, all that number will might fluctuate. But for now, that's the number it is. It roughly came to about fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. However, I have a more recent updated number that I got today from Kathy because they are closing out permits as they can, which is closer now to fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five. So, it'll be probably roughly around fifteen thousand plus or minus by the time we part ways with them. I feel since they did the work, that their compensation is due to them. And I think that that's probably the most professional way to part ways with them. I did speak with Metro West in depth on this. I told them between your contract and what the state allows us to do, we don't have a lot of options in what we can do to compensate you for your time or have you finalize any of the permits that you started. This is really the only thing that between their contract and the state allows us to do. I also talked with Minspect and let them know that what I'm proposing to the city council and that if they do pick up the permits, that the plan review fee was paid to Metro West that they would only get their percentage of the building permit fee and they were amenable to that. So, they'll have the list as well. So, I think since both of them agreed to this, I kind of feel like it's a fair, a fair way to go about it. Because again, Metro West has put in the time and the hours reviewing these permits, so. There is kind of a second part to that. I am going to, well, actually, maybe we should talk about that first, that portion of it. If you have any questions for me.
Thank you for all that information. That was very thorough. Appreciate that. I'm sure that Minspect probably appreciated the fact that we're willing to do that as well. So, that if the time ever comes and we have to part our ways with them, okay, they know that we will do the same for them, so. Anybody have any questions for Stacy?
I think she answered. My question I would have had would be are both parties agreeable to determine if the proposal is a huge party.
Yes.
That would be the only concern.
Is that money available?
Oh, so just to clarify, that was actually going, that was going to be part of my next point. But yes, so all of the permits that have been issued have been paid for, that this would apply to. So, the money is already, we already have received the money and would have reimbursed them if they would have finalized out the permit anyway. But they just won't give that portion of the permit fee.
The whole portion.
Yeah. Mayor, any comments?
I guess the only thing I would say, it sounds to me like there is no difference to us as a city. The money that's collected gets paid out and then it doesn't make any difference to us as long as both parties are okay with it, is what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Yes. You are correct.
All right, thank you.
So, what do you need from us today? So, what I am looking for, so actual official action on the contract and this memo would be on January eleventh. I wanted to get some direction from the council tonight because I would like to take it back to Metro West tomorrow, just which way we're leaning on it. Just to give him a heads up on what the council is thinking and the city is thinking. Mostly because as a business owner, I get his point, you know. Like, if I'm not going to get paid for anything, then why should I fill out my ninety days?
Right.
And I don't blame them. Like, I get that, so.
Well, that wouldn't be correct.
Right. Oh, I'm okay with it.
Oh, yeah.
So, is Minspect, are they prepared to jump in whenever the?
I mean, it's seconds, half of the memo. Let's see if the mayor is okay with that.
Oh, yeah, it sounds fine.
Since we have general agreement on that, that'll bring me into my next point. After I have the conversation tomorrow with Metro West, my thought was to give him two options. To take this review money with the permits that I have to date. And that wouldn't be paid until his contract technically is done because I have to make sure I get all the physical permits back. But that we could actually break his contract before the ninety days are up and start Minspect on, I believe it would be the sixteenth. Or would he prefer to work out through the February second so he could finalize some more permits and actually get his full payment for those permits? That was what I was going to suggest him. I did talk to Minspect to see if they'd be able to start on the sixteenth. And if we can get the contract and everything on the eleven, they felt that they could do that.
Okay, so basically, we're going to leave it up to Metro West.
Yeah.
How soon they want to go.
Yeah, technically, right now, it's February second is his ninety day contract or his ninety day notice for to expire his contract.
Okay.
Minspect is fine with.
As possible, we've been given with January sixteenth, if that's what he chooses.
If he chooses that, yes. Okay, I'm fine with that. Any other comments? Mayor?
That sounds fine. Is it, is there just two possible dates? Or is there possibly a date in between there that they could agree to?
Well, if I had.
It doesn't matter to me, of course, but I'm just wondering if there's choices.
The only reason, just to be frank, the only reason that Metro West is going to want to stay on at all is if they feel that they can get some of their permits final inspected. Otherwise, my gut feeling is they're going to want to cut ties as soon as possible because they're not going to be getting paid for any of the building permits that are going to be coming in because they won't get, because their contract says that they don't get paid until the project is a hundred percent complete. So, they act, so the contract they have with the city right now does not actually allow payment until a project is a hundred percent complete. Well, none of these new permits will have that happen. So, I'm guessing that he'll probably want to take, you know, the review plan side of it and and cut ties. That's my gut feeling.
Yeah, well, it sounds like sooner the better then because anything new coming across the desk either doesn't happen or they're not going to really want to work on it too much, right?
That is my thought. I'm not going to, you know, put words in their mouth. But I guess if it was my business, that would be my thought probably. So, I think it's fair to say that if they cut ties sooner than later, it might be better for both parties. And our citizens who are going to be applying for permits in that limbo time.
Yeah, I think, I think that is, if we can get that information and, and let the public know that when they come in for permits, that if they wait another week or so, that might be beneficial to those building project managers or whatever, so.
Lucky for us right now, we have not had really a lot of action on permits because of the winter. But that is right now my direction to staff and any of the public who comes in to just kind of put a short hold on, on things until we have a final answer on this.
You're right. And you're only talking a couple of weeks, so I can't imagine that being a problem.
Right.
Wouldn't think anyone is.
Okay.
So, you just want a consensus on that as well?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm fine with letting them pick. I kind of feel like this one day would be better, but, you know.
No, no, I mean, Metro West made it clear when we spoke with them that that's, would be their preference if they know they're not going to get paid for a portion of work and inspect them, they can move up the date. So, we have flexibility and I'm confident that they'll both agree whatever date, if we can move it up, whatever date.
I just want to make it clear because I know this sounds negative, like, we're not going to pay you. Their contract is what's binding us from paying them, not that the city doesn't want to pay them. It's the contract that they have in place.
Yeah. And I'm guessing that the reason I gave the ninety days was because they, it was in their contract.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yep, everybody else, or is that good?
Good. Sounds like you're good, you're covered.
Yeah, we got a thumbs up from the mayor, so. Okay. Anything else on here? I'm assuming that our attorney looked over the contract.
Yes, I did. There is going to be some further revisions. They were okay with a couple of changes that I had and those have been incorporated into draft you have. I just now got some further information that we had requested, Stacy and I had requested of them when we did our phone call with them early this week. And so, I will be working on getting Exhibit A and B finalized. And there'll be some changes in, you know, what's being covered. And there'll be an exception in Exhibit A for what they're getting paid excluding those plan review fees that we're paying West Metro. We'll ask, have some language in there that will address refund policy excluding forward. And Stacy could be coming back with some additional stuff down the road that they're recommending the city do as far as updating schedules and some other orders as well. But that's later. We'll worry about the contract now. So, I'm hoping to have this finalized by Monday, get emailed out to everybody, and that'll be that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, good. All right. Item number four on our agenda, Advisory Board Code of Conduct.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, it was requested that I assemble a advisory board code of conduct for our advisory boards. So, I basically did a little Googling and found a couple of samples and took what I felt were the best parts of both and put, put a document together for your consideration and review. You also received earlier today information from PPU General Manager Butcher relating specifically to the Public Utilities Commission. I think that his observations are spot on and that we could very easily just modify the document to move the Public Utilities Commission out of the list of city's advisory boards, but acknowledge in the document that as, as a board that has its members appointed by the council, they have adopted their own code of conduct and is, and it's available. We can either attach that portion of their twenty-four page document as an appendices to this or, or whatever the council directs us to do. So, at this point, I'm just looking for some input. Was I heading in the right direction? Was there something I missed? Are there any other modifications or things that you would like to see added?
We won't actually take them off the list here, but we would be.
Well, we do appoint the members. So, while they act as an independent agent, the council is responsible for reviewing the applicants and placing them on on the commission. So, I think somewhere in there, we need to acknowledge that that's a function that the city council performs. But then I think we can acknowledge that they have adopted their own set of working guidelines and their own codes of conduct. And I would assume that if there was ever a time where that board felt like they needed somebody removed, they would make that recommendation to the council. So, I think Keith and I can maybe work on some language relating to that. Because you will note that at the end of the document, penalties for non-compliance is potential removal from a specific advisory board. So, I think we could tweak the language a little bit.
Well, I had a couple of thoughts on it. Because it is a little bit confusing that we say code of conduct advisory boards and board members. I'm wondering if we couldn't change the wording from advisory board but to, the wording would be city boards and commissions.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
And then it's not going to be confusing what's the difference between, you know, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority or whatever.
Yep.
So, yeah, I would, I would call it city boards and commissions. And then my other note I had here was to just note that the Public Utilities Commission, we could, you know, put a comment in there with the exception of the PUC as they have their own code of conduct policy somewhere on there.
Yep.
And then the other thing that I feel is missing that I was looking for in this was some sort of verbiage about, like, acting professionally and respectfully at all times. Because that is, you know, one of our goals to putting this together. I think needs to be mentioned somewhere in there. About professional and respectful conduct at all times.
Yeah, could that be added to one of the bullet points we're going to page in on? Creating other board members in the public, Minspect and not writing opinions about.
Yep, we can add that.
Yeah, okay.
The only other thing I had is on page three, the very top paragraph. I think there's one typo in here.
Probably.
It reads, "Board members shall not use or disclose, other than in the performance of their official duties and responsibilities, or as may be required by law, confidential information gained in the course of or my."
Oh.
Reason of.
Yep. Yep.
By reason of.
Yeah, it should be by. You are correct.
Yeah, so did the lead not have a sample copy? So, okay. Okay, those would be my recommendations. Does anybody agrees with us?
Yeah, I suppose the bigger Minnesota cities didn't have something.
I can double check.
But I mean, if you've done some research, that's, you know, I mean, that's.
I didn't think to check that one, but I'll double check.
But I think we're on the right track. All right, mayor, any comments?
Yeah, I just have one comment. I like, I'm fine with, you know, all of the things that were written with the changes with the PUC. But I'm wondering if since the Planning Commission has authority to make decisions that the city cannot review, if that needs to be listed in there somewhere.
I thought it said something in here about the Planning Commission.
Yep, second sentence of.
I may have missed it.
Yep, since these boards are advisory with the exception of some actions of the Planning Commission and et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I just missed it then.
Yeah, but just I'm noticing this now too because I recall under the prior mayor, we had to do some revisions to Title II regarding the how, changing the language regarding removal from various commissions, on commission, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, EDA Board, things like that. So, we might need to expand a little bit the questions on that. You can go back.
Yeah, I'll just double check. I didn't have a chance to send it over to Damian until now, so.
Okay.
We'll have a conversation and double check all of our Is and dot our Ts and before chip.
And look at it again and.
Correct. I can either, we can either do another study session on it or we can have a, just a discussion item on the eleventh and then adopt it on the twenty-fifth. And that works. I like that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I should know the answer to this question. We must have something in place because I feel a lot of applications. We must have something in place prior to this board expensive or.
Yeah, it was just like two sentences. I found on a really old agenda, it was like on blue paper or whatever, and it was just like two little sentences. It wasn't like a.
Policy name, there's no application, I don't know.
And the way this is formatted is, yeah. And the way this is set up is that once someone is appointed to a commission, you note that there's an acknowledgement of receipt so that.
They will get the code of conduct?
Yep, that they're going to get it and they're going to acknowledge that they reviewed it or that, whatever. So, that, and then we'll just keep that on file and someplace, I don't know where. But that way, if there's ever any question or someone's conduct is called in question, we can remind them that, you know, they received it and they acknowledged that they received it, so.
So, my next question, just brought up another question. I saw something in here too that brought up the fire advisory board because that is different townships representatives.
Yep.
So, what would the procedure for us be if we felt somebody from that board needed to be removed due to conduct? Would we, I mean, we should probably have something in place, how we would handle that.
Yes, and that's a good question. I think that's a question that Damian and I will need to explore.
Okay. And because otherwise our hands are tied according to that.
Yep. Because we don't appoint those, they're appointed by their individual jurisdictions, so.
So, maybe we would petition to the township or something to add that one in here.
Yeah, but add reason.
I mean, we, we can still have a code of conduct at a meeting, either put a, a code of conduct at a meeting should be in general. But we don't have control over their appointees, but we have control at the meeting. But I don't, I don't like that.
You think?
Yeah.
Tell the lady, you're already going to leave.
Okay, anybody else?
I have another comment. So, the EDA Board has a set of bylaws. Each one of these boards that have the bylaws probably have to have some language in their bylaws that incorporates this code of conduct. I don't know that it necessarily pertains to this document, but I think we need to make sure that it gets inserted where it needs to get inserted in each board.
We'll make that note.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, there's nothing else. We'll move on to item number five, the Baldwin Township incorporation.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, we received due notice that Baldwin Township has filed to incorporate. We did meet Attorney Damian and also Attorney Kelly Bourgeois. What's her name?
Bourgeois.
Bourgeois.
Can you remind us who she is with?
She is actually, she's actually the city administrator.
Yeah, I can give you some background. So, she was the Becker, she still is the Becker Township attorney and she did all the work, various positions in Becker forever. She got to know Dick Schiefer through that relationship fifteen plus years ago. And when it passed away, my predecessor, Dove Frethlin, Ben Buckner, brought her on as a consultant because he has expertise in areas like this and, you know, he resources and all different, especially zoning. And so, she contracted through us and she's been providing services through the city in that way. And then when Dove Frethlin pulled up shop and I went of mind, then I just continued that relationship with her. So, she's got a lot of tremendous experience in areas like this, much more so than I, so.
Thank you.
So, at this, I mean, at this point, we're just, we've been doing some staff research regarding the process in your packets today. We gave you the entire chapter two of the Leamis to the city's handbook. I think the first maybe five or six pages relate to incorporation. And also the statutory process. And we, I guess, are looking for direction as to how the council wants us to proceed. I didn't want to assume any particular direction. We have an opportunity to object through the process. If that is the direction the council gives us, then we will proceed to pull together with what we need in order to do that, once the hearing's been set. Otherwise, we could proceed to allow them without an objection, so.
Does anybody remember when they, it's like eighteen years ago or something, as we. Damian, you might have been here.
Yeah, I met you seventeen, oh, I think eighteen as of next month.
Okay, it might have been just before your time. Yeah, I don't know. Tom, do you remember at all, Mayor Walker?
What am I remembering?
When Baldwin was going to incorporate, it was shortly after I came on council, I know, twenty-two years ago or something, when they were going to incorporate.
Yeah, they were always rumbling about doing that, but they never got closer than talking about it before it helped.
Okay, so they never went to state at that point?
No, we had, we had discussions about what would happen. So, and what we were told was what was in the memo as far as, you know, possible, possible outcomes from the, from the hearing.
Okay, so it ever made form of adjustments or anything like that or whatever board they're wanting to?
It did not.
Okay, all right.
It's the boundary, boundary commission.
I, I think, I am recalling that that did prompt some preliminary discussions regarding the board agreement, which, you know, both of you just came up there and it was really on and had a discussion.
Yep. It started right immediately.
Yeah. Okay. So, a couple of things that kind of came to my mind was, one of the things in here that says as a requirement for them is existing levels of governmental services provided to the area, including water and sewer service, fire rating and protection, law enforcement, street improvement, maintenance, you know, those kinds of things. I mean, does anybody know what the, what their plan is for sewer service or any of that? And whether their governmental services can best be provided through incorporation or through annexation to an adjacent city. I mean, we have this huge wastewater treatment plant that we built the size that we did to accommodate, you know, things such as this or, you know, adding quite a bit of influx to our wastewater system, which I think would be very beneficial to the residents of Baldwin.
Most typical part discussion way back when that I was talking about was getting that infrastructure because, you know, people are in acreage out there and nobody can afford the infrastructure. So, that was one deficit with.
Right.
With our plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think at this point, those questions really aren't ours to answer. those questions really aren't ours to answer. Our responsibility would be to make an argument in the direction that we do have services that could be provided. And we would make, those are the types of things we would be doing research on in order to formulate a cogent argument before the administrative law judge.
Right.
So, as of right now, what we're just looking for tonight is consensus that we need to head in a particular direction and as we develop those documents and those arguments, if that is the council's direction, then we would bring those, that information back to the council for discussion and review.
So you're looking for a general piece of the way you move forward with
Formulating an objection or you direct us to not object to the request? And again, I was not going to presume to know the minds of the five council members.
Right. Well, I'll go first and I would be interested in having you object. I think it would be in the best interest of the Baldwin resident.
I, I as well. I agree.
Yeah, I totally agree with, we have to, if you want to call it, I suppose it has to be called an objection. I guess when I look at it, and I don't know the process, obviously, and I don't know the right timeline, but certainly I would think this administrative law judge would want to know our position. Whether it be framed as an objection or whatever, or an FYI, or whatever you want to call it. We have to, they have to know that we are, we're here, we're not going anywhere. And the point of our, we have more than adequate wastewater treatment available. I think we have a lot of water.
Plenty of water, so.
The ability to expand our electric service into newly acquired territory, if that's the way it works. But yeah, I totally agree. It has to be in the mix.
I would not be in favor of the objection. I don't think that with the different character and density, water, sewer, electricity, they've already got their what they need and I don't think they're going to be looking to make any changes to their density to where these things be necessary. I don't think there's a need, you know, I mean, there's been a few cases where people want to get, wanted to get an extra at the city, but you know, I mean, if there's people that want to do that before, before this happens, they can do that still, but I don't see any need arising from the people's self-advantage to do so, so.
Mayor?
Well, I, my statement would be I strenuously object to this incorporation proposal and furthermore, I would say that by us objecting, we have the interests of the Baldwin Township residents that are more than the town board does. I don't think that anybody there knows exactly what's going to happen to their property taxes. It's going to be a shocking, shocking revelation when they find out what's going to change. So, my, my objection is very loud and clear to this.
Yep. Mayor, they are a small district. We need to watch out for them.
Okay, well, that won't really be impacted by incorporation.
No, but they're
Well, okay.
Part of us, I think. I think, I think there is consensus, so we will proceed accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody know what the timeline would be if like
That would be Correct, so. Correct. We, we were waiting to get some clear direction from the council and we met earlier before the council met to talk about some next steps. And one of the next steps will be reaching out to our contact at the state to find out what the timeline is and when it's being doctored for the administrative law judge and we will report back with what we find.
Anybody else? If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting at 5:06 PM.